The meeting will come to order. We're now holding the annual town meeting for the Town of Stockbridge for the year 2025. Before we start, we're going to ask the representative from our clicker company to come up and once more go over how to operate your clicker.
So, we're going to go over how to briefly use the clicker. If you'll... Louder. Okay. Is this a little better? Is this a little better for you? All right. So, if you'll look to the screen behind me, your clickers will be on channel 74. They're already pre-programmed. Press 1A for a yes vote, 2B for a no vote. Your votes will register when polling is open. You will have 15 seconds when polling is open to register your vote, and I will have a prompt that says "Vote Now." You can vote now when you see that "Vote Now" prompt until the end of those 15 seconds. If you accidentally make a mistake, you push 2 and you meant to push 1, you can simply press 1, which is your correct vote, as long as time has not run out. So, you have to get it in before those 15 seconds. Going to move to my next slide here. This is just a visual of what the screen is going to look like. You'll see in each case of a counted vote, you're going to see your vote choice in that little LCD screen, and you will see a green light on the right-hand side. So, does anybody have any questions on the basics of how to vote? Essentially, you're just going to be using the 1 or 2 for yes or no. Ready to try it out? So, here's our first question. Go ahead and vote now. The first question is, are the Red Sox going to win the pennant? Eighty-eight a split? All right. We're going to try one more. We're going to try one more, but I'm going to go back to my machine to get this one started. Okay. Is fall in the Berkshires beautiful? Go ahead and vote now. Press 1 for yes, 2 for no. I'm going to go ahead and start the clock.
It doesn't work. Ah ha. Anyone else have that problem?
No. No. They turn on automatically once they're in a standby state right now. Once you push the button while polling is open, they're automatically on.
But then do they go right on?
Yes. Yes. It's not going to stay on. Once you vote, your vote is counted, and then returns to the standby state.
All right. You're going to have to use the mic. Sorry.
That's okay. We'll try another. Okay. We're going to go ahead and ask this question again. Go ahead and vote now. What you should see when you vote is your choice will show up on your little LCD screen. You'll see a little green button, a little green light, and then it will return to its standby state. Anybody have a question?
Is the green light supposed to stay on?
No. The green light does not stay on. It just flashes to let you know that your vote has been counted. Anybody else?
Any more problems? Before we start, I'd just like to have a couple of ground rules. If you wish to discuss any articles, come up to our mic, and sometimes we have a line there, and we'll go through the line. One thing, I noticed we have far more non-resident or non-voting people attending this meeting, so I would prefer that the line be only Stockbridge voters until that line finishes, and then if the non-resident wishes to speak, I may or may not recognize him, depending on how we're moving along. Okay. With that, we'll start with Article 1.
Article 1. I move that the following officers be chosen for the year commencing July 1, 2025. Fence viewers Gary Johnson and Christopher B. Marsden. Measurers of wood William Markham and Mark Fadding. Measures of coal H. Linden Searing and Nicholas F. Nadorf. Weirs of sand and gravel John Jake Donovan and Clinton Snyder. Field drivers Gary Johnsons.
Article 1 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to click. All those in favor, please click 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Before we go to Article 2... All right, well, you're up. Go ahead. Come on, Chuck.
Article 2. I move that the town accept all printed reports of the town offices and committees as public in the annual report.
Do I hear a second? Article 2 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, click 1. Opposed, click 2. Okay. Before we ask for Article 3, I just wanted to make a note for you folks that we have moved the citizens petition, which was listed as number 17. We're moving it up to number 8. Well, it'll be just after Article 7. So, make a note of that, and don't be surprised when it happens. 184 to 4 on the last Article 2. It passed.
I move... Just kidding. I move that the town pursuant to Chapter 41, Section 108 of the Massachusetts General Laws fix the annual salary and compensation of all elected officers of the town for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2025 as follows. Moderator: $300. Select Board Chair: $6,500. Two members at $5,500 each. Board of Assessors Chair at $4,000, and two members at $3,250.
Go ahead, second. Article 3 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, click 1. Article 3 has passed, 178 to 11.
Thank you, Gary. Can everybody hear me? Unfortunately, I'll be here for a couple of minutes. I have a few things to do. I would like first... I'm Jay Bykowsky. I am the Chair of the Finance Committee. Article 4 does deal with the operating budget of the town, and before I get into it, I'd like to briefly introduce the members of our wonderful committee. On my left, and they can raise their hands, Jim Ball Fans is a former Executive Director of the U.S. Ski Association and Ski Team, also a former co-owner of a manufacturer's representative company, as well as past President and Board Member of CTSB TV. Pam Boudreau. Pam Boudreau is a longtime resident of the town, a community banker, branch manager, and mortgage officer of the Lee Bank, and has also been Treasurer of the Southern Berkshire Chamber of Commerce, and on the Committee of United Cerebral Policy, and also is President of the Stockbridge Chamber presently. Rich Bradway. Thank you, Rich. Digital Information Officer of the Norman Rockwell Museum. He has held a similar position at Boston City Orchestra, past member of the Stockbridge School Committee, Campusa Bog Committee, and presently a member of the Mohegan Commission, as well as President of the Stockbridge Land Trust. Ed Lane. Thirty-six years as a consulting actuary, Certified Financial Planner, University of Finance and Economics Professor, Ollie Economics Lecturer, and current Treasurer of the Stockbridge Library. Georgia Marsden. Georgia has been the former Stockbridge Town Clerk, Assistant Tax Collector, Assistant Treasurer, and retired Town Administrator. She also serves as a Senior Warden of a local church, Board Member of the Norman Rockwell Museum, on the Board of Riverbrook, the Kiwanis Club of Lee, and Treasurer of the Williams High Alumni Association. Diane Rouse. Diane is an in-owner and operator, past President of the Stockbridge Chamber of Commerce, and all Chamber Business Group, and past member of the Berkshire Opera Company. Steve Shatz. Forty-eight years of practicing attorney, past member of the Stockbridge Planning Board, Stockbridge Housing Committee, and past Chair and Select Board Member of the Town of Stockbridge. He's also served as CATA, C-A-T-A, past President and present Board Member, Berkshire Regional Hills School Committee, Building Committee, and on the Rest of the River Committee. William Vogt. William is a retired Senior Manager in Corporate and Municipal Finance, having served with an internationally recognized financial institution. Also a Board Member of Hancock-Schechter Village, Camp Hill Village, the Stockbridge Planning Board, and presently on the Board of the Berkshire Hills Regional School Committee. Yours truly, I didn't want to say anything, but I was asked to say something. I have been a retired Senior Executive of a Fortune 500 Insurance Brokerage Firm, past Hospital Association Board Chairman, past Board Member of the Berkshire Museum, Boston University Board Chairman, past University Professor, currently a Boston Medical Center Board Member, and presently your Chairman of the Finance Committee of the Town of Stockbridge. Just in closing our introductions, I also want to thank particularly Michael Canales, Town Administrator, as well as the Department Heads for their role in developing the budget and the warrant articles which we'll deal with this evening, along with the Select Board for their import and support of this process. And a particular thanks is due to the gentleman standing right behind me, Gary Johnson, who was appointed to this exceptionally qualified Finance Committee possessing most impressive knowledge and corporate financial skills, as well as in many cases having served on committees and boards of our town. Thank you all.
Okay. Do the budget? Yes.
Article 4, next. Article 4 is the operating budget. The operating budget exclusive of education is $9,336,087. This budget consists of a number of different sections, and I'm going to briefly run through them. The General Government section increased 2.1%, and the increases are due briefly for selectman expenses, for town accountant expenses, for the salaries of the assessor, the town Treasurer and Collector, the Assistant Town Treasurer and Collector, the Town Clerk, as well as the Assistant Town Clerk. And also, in this general section, are increases, modest increases, for the Stockbridge Bowl Stewardship Committee and IT, information technology. This section, as I said, increased 2.1, the proposed 2.1% increases. The next section, police safety. Public safety, rather. This increases are noted in police department salaries and expenses, as well as fire department salaries and expenses, and building inspectors. This year, we've combined the Building Inspector Department with four towns that are consisting of Stockbridge, Lenox, Lee, and Great Barrington, and the expenses that we pay are reimbursed through assessments to these three remaining towns, including a contribution to our town. So, basically, that increase is 34% due principally to the building inspector expenses. Education. We will mention education, but very briefly, the change is 7.6% for the operating educational budget assessment for the Town of Stockbridge, salaries and benefits, and supplies for the Berkshire Hills Regional School District. And the capital budget assessment has decreased because that assessment has been retired through paying off debt. So, basically, the educational assessment for our town is 5.8%, but as I mentioned previously, presenting principally the operating budget exclusive of education, which will follow this presentation. Public Works and Facilities. Highway Department machinery increases were noted. Salaries and expenses for the transfer station, that's working quite well for most of us. Highway Department Cemetery salaries, sewer expenses, Water Department expenses. The increases here represent 3.1%. Human Services, the next section. Board of Health salaries, slight increase. The Tri-Town Health now located in these offices here on this floor, relocation from Lee. An increase in Council of Aging expenses, and the total increase there is 5%. Culture and Recreation. The operation of the library increased somewhat, as well as the Memorial Day Committee. That category increased 6.1%. Debt Service declined 1.8%, again because debt has been retired and paid off, which is a very good thing, and subject to the fine credit rating of this institution, which is critical to maintain in the future if we want to borrow money at reasonable cost. The next major category, Berkshire Employee Benefits. Berkshire County Retirement has increased, as has Berkshire Health and Dental, I'm sure has increased for all of you also. That category has increased 9.5%. And Town Insurance, a very slight increase there, 1.1%. So, basically, the operating budget, the operating budget has increased 9%. And without education, that increase is $1,111,963. Excuse me. That's with education, and without education, it's $889,000 less. 9% increase translated... You say, "So what?" Translated to your tax rate, at this point, 3.5% increase in the tax rate, which is one of the lowest in the county. That's it. Thank you.
Moved and seconded?
You want to make the motion?
Yes. I make a motion to approve the budget, the operating budget exclusive of education, which will be done separately.
We have to read it like it's on the warrant.
You have to read this.
Oh, sorry.
Stand up for my camera.
I thought you guys wanted to get rid of me already. I move that the town raise and appropriate a sum of $9,336,087 to defray the expenses of the various departments of the town for fiscal year commencing July 1, 2025, in accordance with the finance and recommendation of the Finance Committee, which was unanimous.
Article 4 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes. Matt?
Matt Chester, 5 Church Street. Jay, I wonder if you could just go over the building inspector increase, because that seems to be the majority, you know, 40 to 50% of the increase, and I just want to make sure everybody understands what's going on there, because I know you said it gets reimbursed, but I'm not actually sure if that's representing the total amount, and then we're being reimbursed for part of that, or if you could just describe that a little better. Thanks.
Do you want to do it, Mike? Go ahead.
In the public safety line, there's two large increases, which are the building department and the fire salaries. We're going to be receiving $103,000 back in fire salaries from the Town of West Stockbridge, and then we're going to be receiving $428,000 back from the four other communities. Therefore, the appropriation for the building department that we're funding is only $84,000. So, I hope that that explains it. You just see the total cost, because we're going to be the lead, and we're going to get reimbursed all but $84,000 of the building inspector line.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of Article 4, please click 1. The ayes have it, 185 to 11.
Article 5. I move that the town raise and appropriate a sum of $4,848,74 for the FY '26 assessment of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District.
Article 5 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to... Well, 1-1. Right, Sally?
How many kids?
How many children in the district? How many children in the district from...
110.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor of Article 5, please click 1. Article 5 has passed, 184 to 21. That can't be right. 174. It's 174 to 21.
Before I read Article 6, I just wanted to thank both of our Chairs that served this year. When Jamie and I ran for our other office, Chuck stepped up and served as Chair for a couple of months, and then Jamie, it's been really a pleasure to serve with you, and I wanted to thank this Board and the Finance Committee for all the hard work that brought forth this budget today, or all these articles. Article 6. I move that the town raise and appropriate a sum of $4,473 to pay the town share of the principal and interest due in the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2025, for the financing of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District's school building construction projects.
Article 6 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of Article 6, please click 1. Article 6 has passed, 181 to 14. Article 7.
I move that the town raise and appropriate a sum of $155,142 from the OPEB, OPEB Fund, established under General Laws, Chapter 32B, Section 20, for the payment of retiree health insurance costs, and that such amount shall be transferred to the town's annual budget for retiree health insurance.
Article 7 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please... Wait. Oh. I'm sorry. Oh. That's right. They're having a discussion.
The Finance Board rejected it, 5 to 2.
Okay.
It was rejected 5 to 2 by the Finance Committee.
All right. It was rejected by the Finance Committee by a vote of 5 to 2. Patrick's going to, there we go. Patrick's going to address Article seven.
I want to lay out the for and against for voting for this. Okay, the town has done, the town has done an extraordinary job. OPEB is basically health insurance after you, after you leave the town. So it's not pension, just health insurance. But health insurance is expensive, and you know, the more employees we have, the more it costs the government to fund this. Now, the argument against this is pretty simple. We may have some extra employees, because one of the things we're planning on doing is hiring a bunch of firefighters and EMPs with the new firehouse. So as, as the number of employees goes up, so do our OPEB costs. So a prudent decision might be to reject OPEB. The other side of that is that we're, we're at or about 100 percent funded, at around several, just over $4 million, I believe is the number. That's your money that you put into this, and you put it into it so that when it came time to need it, that you would pay for it. Now, if we say no to this, your taxes go up an extra one and a half percent. For some people, that's not a lot, but in the average tax bill, that's about 100 bucks. I think that the larger point I'll make is this. I don't believe this will have any impact on our borrowing costs, because in borrowing in Massachusetts, they just want to see if you have an OPEB account. And so it doesn't matter if you have 50,000 or 5 million in it, you get the benefit if you got one. And in fact, our school district, Berkshire Hills, has, has an OPEB liability of over $50 million, and that is because they funded out of operations, as do most municipalities in Massachusetts. So we've done a great job building it up, but I feel this is your money, and, and because it's at or near 100 percent, you should start to access it to keep, to offset some of the other expenses that we've raised on the budget. Thank you.
Let me just clarify something regarding OPEB, other post-employment benefits. We use an actuarial consulting firm called Odyssey Advisors. As of June 30, 2024, the, the total OPEB liability was $4,682,503. Basically, the funding, the planned assets, the trust assets, was $4,328,621, or 92.44 percent. And the thought here that the Finance Committee had was that the, the trust fund be 100 percent funded before distributions come out of it. And Selectman White said, and said accurately, that there will be an expansion of employees when we talk about fire, EMS, and other things that we're doing. So basically, the Finance Committee did not want to take that contribution at this point until the trust was fully funded.
Thank you, Jay.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Tom Fine in from Rutherford St. Mountain Road. How do we fund the retiree benefits now? So it's coming, it's coming out of general funds?
Yes.
And why does it differ about doing this? We're, we're taking money out of a set aside fund specifically for retirees?
Yeah.
My understanding is the Finance Board is not happy because it's not 100 percent funded, but it's only 92 percent funded.
The balances right now are somewhat higher than if they were at the end of last fiscal year. It's a trade-off.
Patrick? Yeah, you're going to need the mic.
According to Michael, the balance right now in the fund is, well, I think Jay had the most recent number, the $4,320,000.
Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of Article seven, please click one. Opposed, click two. We will now move to Article 17.
I'm right here. Article 17.
Carol, I know most people know you, but would you please state your name and address?
I'm pleased to. I'm Carol Owens. I'm a Stockbridge resident and a Stockbridge voter. Article 17. Gary, do you want both parts?
Yeah, I think so.
Article 17, petition article. We, the undersigned qualified voters of the town of Stockbridge, request that the Select Board include the article appearing below in the warrant at the annual meeting on May 19th. Clearly, the Select Board approved it, the article, to see if the town of Stockbridge should appropriate an amount not to exceed $600,000 from free cash for the purpose of exercising its Chapter 61 right to acquire the parcel for sale at zero Interlake and Crossroad as described in the Middle District Berkshire County Registry of Deeds, Book 1347, page 368. May I make a clarification?
17 has been moved and seconded. Yes, Carol?
Thank you so much. The figure of $600,000 appears, but this is the reality on the ground today. The cost to Stockbridge would probably not exceed $130,000. Gary, may I explain?
Please.
Okay, thank you. The purchase price currently is $600,000. Jim, wave hi. Jim Scalise has a contract with the Miles Moffett Property Trust for purchase. We have a right of first refusal. If we exercise it, we would have to match his offer. So the figure, 600,000, appears however. Between when this was written and today, which is less than 21 days, generous people in our community have contributed $80,000. That makes it 520. The Community Preservation Commission took a straw poll and conditionally, under their open space commitment, committed 100,000. I can't subtract backwards. 423, there's a banker sitting right there, don't you grin at me, help me. Okay, so 500 to 420, that makes it 320, and, is that right? Or it makes a 420? And that makes a 420? Thank you. All right, we're down to 420. And if we buy it, we have every right to do the following, and we may choose to do it. There are 35 acres. We could sell two lots in our two zone, two acres each, for $150,000 each, which is market, minus $300,000, 120, guys. And in that case, we as the owners can put a conservation restriction on 31 acres, and the lucky buyer of those two lots will have the biggest backyard in the Berkshires. Thank you.
Well, that was interesting. Does anyone have further discussion? David?
Dave McCarthy on Church Street. So actually, Carol's numbers were only off by, the community preservation money is our money as well. So it's actually 100,000 more of town money than Carol's numbers suggested. Sorry. Well, okay, Carol can correct me, but community preservation money is our money, and if they're committing that money to this project, then that's our money as well. So I would, I would suggest to the argument that it's 100,000 more. But the real issue to me is, are we really going to become a development company? Turn the town into a, you know, a development office that's going to develop property? You know, property has a way of sitting on the books, sorry, for a long time. We only need to look at Town Hall to know that that happened, and, you know, there's carrying costs to that, and I would be very concerned that the town is not prepared for that in this and all the follow-up properties that might be suggested in this regard. So I would be a no on this. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Hi. Menor Sundberg, Averick Road, Stockbridge. I take a different position. Can you, can you hear me?
Yeah. Yeah.
Like this? Okay. I take a bit of a different position, but I first want to thank our Select Board, the three members who last week were very thoughtfully considering this proposal and voted to retain the town's right of first refusal on the Moffett Trust property, on the Interlake and Crossroad. That affords us, we, the people, the townspeople of Stockbridge, we have an opportunity to consider the purchase of the 35-acre parcel for the town. The cost, as Carol has mentioned, is reduced by the donations that have been raised in a very short period of time, and, you know, and grants from possibly the, the Community Preservation Committee funds. And that then leaves us with possibly 120,000. As David McCarthy said, we could debate that, that figure, whether it's taxpayer, it is taxpayer money and money from people coming from out of town that, that creates that, that fund. So this, the way I view it, is a kind of win-win plan for the town, a win for the seller, a win for the buyer, and a win for the town, tax dollars on the two houses and 30 acres of woodland preserved for nature. Thank you.
Paul Sundberg, Averick Road. I feel that we, the citizens, have the right to control our destiny and shape the future of Stockbridge. We need careful planning and wisdom to deal with this and further development concerns. I don't think this is necessarily the model that we would apply to the many other properties that could face development, but it's a start, and the careful planning of how we move forward is extremely important.
I'm Peter Ackley. I live on Willard Hill Road. I would, it's easy to get locked down into the numbers here, but I'd like to look at the big picture, and that is that we are facing a development crisis, and we are, this gives us an opportunity to apply this template, this model, to other projects that will be coming along. Now, this, this property is governed by Chapter 61, which gives, of course, the town the right of first refusal. That does not mean that we're getting into the real estate business. If we can immediately sell two lots, get most of our money back, and that leads to a very happy situation in which we have some growth. We do not want to be no-growth, that's obviously would be a mistake, but it gives us some growth and it gives the town the possibility to, in fact, the likelihood of, of controlling the growth, which is something that we need to pay very close attention to because of the economics. The developers are looking, they see Stockbridge as red meat, and if we don't control it, we're going to become Great Barrington. And I would, I'm sorry if there's anybody here from Great Barrington, but, but I think that underscores the, the need for us to take a close look at this. This is not just an Interlake and project. It applies to the entire town, and we want to, I, I'd just like to remind everybody that there are, this was news to me, but there are approximately 50 parcels in the town of Stockbridge that are under Chapter 61. That's 50 of them, and there are going to be more coming down the pipeline. In fact, there are some in the pipeline now. So this project and this model that we're looking at tonight can serve as a, a great template for us to follow in the future. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amy Pollak. I live on Willard Hill Road. We, the people, should control the growth of Stockbridge. Let us control our destiny to define our town's growth instead of allowing developers to have, to work for their own enrichment. By adopting this plan, we will have a strategy, a blueprint, that puts us in control as each new block of land hits the market. As the gentleman before me said, there are over 50 of these blocks that will be coming on the market soon. Please, to all of you in the Selectmen, please protect our unique, small-town way of life that has served Stockbridge so well. Please protect it for all the future generations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Richard Pollak, and I live on Willard Hill Road in Stockbridge. I am a certified public accountant, forensic accountant, that specializes in finance and valuation of businesses. Thank you for the honors to speak here before you this evening. I believe in open space resource design, a strategic process that integrates conservation and community-driven planning. This approach empowers us to keep control over our destiny. We can accomplish this through Community Preservation Committee conditional pledges, donor pledges, and modest plan growth. Conserving land and protecting our precious forests from development, as well as refraining from cutting down trees for housing, is critical for several reasons. Natural landscapes are homes to countless species of plants and animals. Deforestation leads to habitat destruction. Preserving forests is essential for maintaining global temperature, balance, and air quality. Trees play a crucial role in the water cycle by facilitating evaporation and rainfall absorption. In conclusion, I urge you to conserve this land and take control of it. Vote yes. By doing so, we can gain the knowledge and resources necessary to lead our own design process, and in the long term, this approach will greatly benefit the town of Stockbridge at a very reasonable cost. Thank you very much.
I'm John Heisen, Butler Road. I am, want to comment upon the suggestion that what is being proposed could be applied to many other circumstances in the future. I am not particularly concerned about this one circumstance, but it seems to me that what is being proposed is an approach that will basically ensure that to the extent that there is development that can be controlled through, because of the town's right under the preservation, is that is that no regard is being given to the concern that I think we all have and have expressed in the past for affordable housing. This approach is one that basically ensures that places like the one we're talking about are going to provide a haven for people who can afford a hell of a lot of money. And the houses that will be built will be houses that are certainly not affordable housing. So again, my concern is, where, what, how does this, how does this approach relate to and support our concern about affordable housing?
Good evening. I'm Thomas Manicero from 10 Church Street.
A little closer to the mic.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Thomas Manicero from 10 Church Street. I take a different view. We are, we are looking to take $600,000 out of the town's coffers, which would leave us effectively with $70,000 left in free cash. On a bet. On a bet that we're going to be able to sell two acres. We don't know whether we're going to sell them, when we're going to sell them, and what we're going to sell them for, if anybody is even interested. My concern is that taking this money out of our free cash at this point is, to use a word that has been used by one of our colleagues, our citizens, recently, irresponsible. I would say no on this. I would vote no on this proposal.
Patrick?
I want to speak in, hi, Patrick White, Hawthorne Street. I want to speak down here because I'm going to make an opinion on this, on this article. Several things. One, a lot of good points have already been made. I'm not going to rehash those. I just want to point out a couple of things. First, Chapter 61 is designed to protect forest land. And that means that people get a discount on their taxes when they put it in it. And that means that all of you pay for the taxes on Chapter 61 land as a way to preserve that. So it is absolutely not only a right, but the town's obligation to evaluate when they come out of chapter and determine if you're going to exercise the right that you have to do that. All right? Now, I want to point out something else, which is, you know, you know, we elect not to talk about our resumes, but I'll tell you this. You know, I went to kindergarten with Chuck right here in this building, and Jamie went to high school with my sister. And we've all been here a real long time, some of us. And many of us frankly have benefited, in fact, have most of our wealth in our homes. Okay? Maintaining the character of the town helps our property values. Because frankly, a lot of folks see now the fact that most of the houses in Stockbridge are selling for over a million dollars, and they see an opportunity to completely change the nature of the town. Now, one of the speakers talked about Old Town Hall. That's a subject I know a little bit about because that woman standing back there worked for over 10 years to make that project come to fruition. All right? And I'll tell you this, I'm glad they didn't tear it down because they were able to save, you were able to save that building. And when you tear down a forest, you never get it back. So to the people out there who are talking about, well, it's irresponsible to take six months or a year, two years, to figure out how we protect the land in this town and how we protect our home values in this town and how we keep the character of this town the same, I say be patient. Some of us manage things for a living. I won't run through my resume, but some of us manage things for a living. And I guarantee you, if you vote for this, we will figure out how to manage this and protect not only this neighborhood, but all of your neighborhoods when challenges like this come up to it. We can, as someone said, manage our own destiny. And I strongly support this as a model of how we ensure that we get just the right development, a couple houses, rather than blanket all of our land with giant subdivisions that are only driven by profit. Thank you.
Teresa Zanetti, 10 Castle Hill Road. I just have a couple of questions. How did the Finance Board vote on this? Can I ask that?
All right, Steve will have the answer.
Steve Schatz. I'm a member of the Finance Committee. And Teresa, the Finance Committee voted unanimously to not approve, not to recommend approval of this article. I'll have more to say afterward.
How did the entities like Stockbridge Land Trust and Laurel Hill feel about the property?
Rich?
Rich Bradway, East Main Street. I'm going to get a little bit into the weeds just to give background. I'm not trying to profess any kind of opinion. Oh, I can get louder. I'm going to just state how things unfolded without trying to opine on anything. This property was brought to the Land Trust's attention by Berkshire Natural Resources Council. They had indicated that they were asked to participate in the acquisition of the property, as well as to conserve it. And they indicated that they declined that offer because it didn't meet their portfolio profile. The same or similar opinion was brought to us by Laurel Hill. In terms of the Land Trust, there were a number of people who wrote letters asking us to help with paying for this purchase. The purchase price is $600,000. The assessed value is $150,000. If you, if you try to figure out what the fair market value is of that property, $600,000 is still considerably higher than what the fair market value would be of that property. And as a nonprofit, we're not permitted to purchase something well above, like typically, we can maybe stretch it and go 10% above fair market value. So we had to decline in the participation of the acquisition of that property. But we did advocate that if private citizens could come together and work with CPC and they were found a way to acquire the property. And I'll tell you right now, there's some, there's a lot of devils in the details here because it really has to become the town of Stockbridge that has to purchase this, not the private residents. So they have to work with the town to make something happen. And if CPC is involved, I guarantee you, they're going to ask for a conservation restriction, of which case the Stockbridge Land Trust would be happy to participate in holding the CR for that purpose. But we could not participate in the purchase of it. And the one last thing I'll just simply say is that when you go through the process of acquiring a conservation restriction on a piece of property, it's, the $600,000 that we're talking about just covers the purchase. Okay? Since the pandemic, the state has made a number of changes in its requirements as to how you acquire a conservation restriction. It typically requires an appraisal, a baseline report, which basically gives you the baseline of the environmental situation on the property. And then you have to do all the legal work to file the CR. And typically, there's some follow-through on that because if you, if the town decides that they want to do X, Y, and Z, and some things need to be remediated on the property, those costs are also not being accounted for. So I just want to indicate that when it was brought to us, it was simply for the acquisition, but there was no conservation plan to allow us to establish what a conservation restriction might look like. Doesn't mean that we can't come to one, but I'm just simply saying, in the circumstances that led up to this, the, 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 the board, the Board of the Stockbridge Land Trust chose to remain neutral and allow things to unfold as they might, hopefully.
Thank you. My last question is just the legality of the town becoming buyers and sellers of property. It's not really a question. It's just...
Our Town Council? Donna Rooster?
Okay, Gary. Donna Brewer, Town Council. Towns can buy and sell property. However, what I've been hearing tonight is you have not been informed that future town meetings will have to appropriate that CPC money. It cannot be used now for this purpose. Also, future town meetings will have to approve the sale of lots. It is not being done at this town meeting. I wanted to make those two things clear. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Coke Forbes. I live at 9 Glendale, Middle Road. This is a disturbing thing to us in Glendale, to see this happening in Interlake and. It's a beautiful piece of property. It's flat. It has no water on it. It could be built, and it could go onto the tax reserves if the houses were put in there. It could be used for low-income housing. None of this is being asked of the town. None of it's being asked of the voters to vote for that. I think it's a lot to ask us to give $600,000 away on a piece of property that the town could use in a much better way than to leave it as open space. I understand about the animals and all of that. We have the same problem in Glendale. Trees are being cut, have been cut. The animals have no place to go. They're going on all of our lawns and that because of the property that have been cut. We have wetland there that we're trying to protect, that's not being done, that's trying to be built on. This is a piece of property that the town could use for low-income housing. The developer could put housing in there for low-income housing. I don't think the town needs to own this piece of property and have it as open land. I would vote no for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Denny?
I'm Danny Alsop. I live on Main Street in Stockbridge. And I believe that this is a very interesting initiative and very creative for the citizens of the town to actually create a way to do something which has never happened in Stockbridge before. I don't believe that the town has ever exercised its right of first refusal on a chapter, on chapter land. So this is new ground, but we mustn't be afraid of it. We're, we're in interesting times, and we are Stockbridge. We can do things which are creative and innovative, and we can generate them from the floor and have the confidence in each other in our wisdom as a town to do something that is good for all the town in the protection of one of its loveliest and most precious neighborhoods. So I'm for this. Thank you.
Hi, Tom Fine, and again from Rattlesake Mountain Road. Yeah, I think the idea of conserving land, I think the idea of conserving land and controlling growth is very good. My concern is whether we can afford, as a town, to spend $600,000 out of a, yes, it is $600,000, we're going to have to fork that money out at the beginning of this process. Because the CPC money is coming a year from now, maybe, if people vote for it. And there have been lands sitting on my road for sale for two years now, eight acres for $200,000. So my concern is whether we can afford this. In a culture or in a, you know, a financial situation where interest rates are probably going to go up and expenses for the town are going to go up, and we are gutting our free cash to do this. The people who have proposed this are asking us to withdraw money from our stabilization fund to pay for this. So I think, in general, I think this is a good idea. I just think that the finances don't make a lot of sense. That this is not $130,000. The town will have to pay $600,000 upfront to buy this piece of property and hope that the people who made these pledges follow through on them. Hope that the CPC approves us a year from now. Hope that we can sell these two lots. Because I said, there are lots sitting on town for sale for several years. More land for less money. So those are my concerns. If people could convince me that we could afford this, I think I would vote for it. But I'm not sure we could afford it.
Michael?
Michael Royssman, 44 Glendale Road. First, I have a naive question. If the town votes yes, does that mean we do it or no? See, that's what I wanted to know. So even if the town approves this, it doesn't mean it goes through. The other thing is, I was talking to the owner, and he says, the land is not flat, and there is water.
John Gottlieb, Birch Lane. And I'd like to talk about the development crisis that we've been hearing about. And I'm afraid I don't see it. In the last seven years, and you can look at the town reports on the town website, from 2018 to 2024, there were 40 permits for new construction of homes. Forty over seven years, a little bit less than seven per year. Some people would say that's not much, but it's actually less than you would think because it also includes permits for new homes to be built on the site where an existing house was demolished, not land being cleared for construction. And as many of you know, we've had quite a number of houses being built where other houses were demolished. I can look out my door and see three, just from recent years. And in my neighborhood, there's six. So this demand that we hear about is not there, or at least has not surfaced. It didn't surface during and after the pandemic surge. So perhaps there will be more demand in the future, but there is not a group of people lining up to buy a large number of building lots in Stockbridge. In fact, it was mentioned about the number of pieces of land that are for sale. Well, we do have parcels of land for sale. And in most cases, they're large, but yet you wouldn't think that there would be so few lots that could be developed on them. It's very unusual to find a subdivision where you can just take the minimum lot size, divide it into the number of acres being sold, and that's the number of lots you're going to be able to develop. So when people have talked about 16, 17 building lots, it seems extremely unlikely to me. Some examples. Four parcels, 19 acres, the ad says it can be one lot. 25 acres, the ad says it can be two lots. Eight acres, one lot. Nine acres, perhaps two lots, the ad says. Another thing is that we talk about this as though there were no land use approval and review process in Stockbridge. In fact, we have very rigorous land use controls. We have very diligent land use approval commissions. And we have a very, very active public, as you can see tonight. And those factors affect what gets approved. And in this case, it's not just the zoning. We have a very rigorous subdivision regulation which would apply here. And that's administered by the Planning Commission, not reputed to be a very pro-development group in general. And in fact, in the subdivision regulations, they're strict enough. It costs a lot of money to put in a road, costs a lot of money to develop land so you can sell it, whether it's the town doing it or anybody else. But in Stockbridge, it gets even harder if you propose 10 or more building lots. The items that are required when you build 10 or more building lots have become much more subjective, not just setback or a minimum lot size. But some very interesting things, such as, sorry, review of changes in surface drainage, land erosion, loss of tree cover, disturbances of natural ecology, and more. Many subjective items that give the public and other people a chance to weigh in so that if I were the developer, and by the way, I've had this experience for 50 years developing low-income housing. So I've been in the position of applying and getting yelled at for a long time. And I can tell you that you never get what you're going in for. And if I were a developer, I would never ask for more than nine lots because I'd know it was going to be a real headache, especially considering, I don't know how long it's going to take me to sell those lots considering the very limited demand we have. So it's worth thinking... considering the very limited demand we have. So it's worth thinking about what can really likely happen when we're talking about spending money on something like this. And then, in addition, there's a question of what's the real impact on the town. And in Stockbridge, we've had an awful lot of development of different kinds over the years, not necessarily residential development, but think about what's occurred that's, and through which Stockbridge has retained this small-town character that everybody appreciates so much. Do you think today that if someone was proposing 51 apartments in multifamily buildings right next to downtown, that there would be a fuss? And yet, everybody seems to be really happy with Heaton Court. 51 apartments, a stone's throw from the Red Lion, and Stockbridge has managed to remain Stockbridge despite that. Tanglewood, my goodness, that's a pretty big development, and here we still are. How many are there? Nanki, Berkshire Medical Gardens, Karpalu, name it, the Mount. We've survived an economy that's very dependent on tourism. We've survived having more than half the properties in town owned by second homeowners. So if we can remain a small town with these characteristics that people are so desperate to protect, I don't think a few lots on Interlake and Cross Road are going to compromise that or turn us into a suburb. It just doesn't make any sense to me. So I hope that people will think a little bit about that as they vote on this. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Natasha Horetzak, Interlake and Cross. Interesting getting everybody's perspectives, and I think it's really easy to reduce this down to this immediate case, which is the Moffett Trust property. And this is really just, I think, becoming a flashpoint because what we're starting to see is that this is the beginning of potentially multiple, multiple, multiple rolling developments. And I think we're all in agreement. Stockbridge is really magical. We chose to come here because it wasn't Great Barrington, it wasn't Lee, it wasn't Lennox, where you have sort of cheek-to-jowl development. I think there has been an intentional approach to development here, which has meant that, you know, we're not isolated, we're not stuck in the middle of the woods.
Excuse me, excuse me, ma'am. Are you a voter in the town?
I, I think we had some people who weren't voters that were able to come up.
Well, I didn't know of it, but apparently...
Oh, okay. I think we've had about three.
Well, I don't know them, so I'm sorry.
Okay.
There was pointed out that you are not a voter, so voters are all gonna speak first, and gentleman right behind you.
Okay, well, we've had a bit of a mix, and I think some of the voters have passed through. And, you know, even if I'm not a voter...
Regardless, you're out of order.
Oh.
You must sit down. Wayne?
Wayne Slazek, Seven Hill Road. A few things. The proposed development, as I understand, is far from giant. It would look more like Brookside that's just down the street and across the road, very much in line with what supposedly Stockbridge wants to be, which is a nice little residential neighborhood. We talk out of both sides of our mouths. On the one hand, we want to have housing for people to come here, potentially affordable. I don't think Stockbridge is inherently affordable at all for young people. However, I hate the pull-up-the-ladder syndrome feeling that we all have ours, and now we're not gonna let anybody else get theirs. This is a, this is a, a perfect spot for what happened just down the street and across the way. Forty-one percent of Stockbridge is already protected in one fashion or form. Forty-one percent. I'm not sure we need to protect additional acreage as it comes along, especially when we talk about the ones that are coming along. Are we gonna protect all of that? Because now we're gonna be in the business of buying lots through the town and then deciding who gets in? I'm not a fan of it. I, I think we have very strict rules already. As the gentleman said, we have very strict rules. You cannot just roll in here and do what you please. It sounds like it's gonna be a free-for, it's not gonna be a free-for-all. There's very strict controls on what we do. I don't want to be involved in a land transaction through the town. I, I think we have good controls, and if BNRC and Laurel Hill don't think this is worth preserving, I think we gotta think twice about whether we feel the need to preserve it. Thank you.
Gary Millerton, Rattlesnake Mountain Road. A gentleman earlier said, "Well, you can only put nine buildings there." Well, seems like a lot to me. I think this proposal is a nice balance of building and conservation, and actually, more importantly, I think that it creates, as was pointed out earlier by someone, that this creates a model for us to use in the future as more and more properties come up, and it does give us control of how this town will be developed. And as for the gentleman who was sure that these lots weren't going to sell, I know my son has a piece of property, Pittsfield, that borders on the state forest. He owns, I don't know, a few acres, not much, but boy, pretty swell backyard he's got there. And a, a lot of other people seem to think so, too. Just a thought.
Steve?
Again, I'd like to make it clear as to what the nature of the vote was taken by the Finance Committee. We have tried to focus over the years, at least the years that I've been on the Finance Committee and the years that I worked with it when I was on the Select Board, we've tried to maintain a strict adherence to our jurisdiction, which is the finances of the town, both on the income and the debt side. We've tried very hard not to become a surrogate Select Board nor a surrogate Planning Board, although people on our, our committees certainly have very strong opinions about land use and, and development in the town. So in this particular case, we looked at two items. We were concerned about our reserve position, having recently established a policy, which the Select Board also established, of maintaining a reserve policy of essentially 15% reserves. Now, this particular proposal would result in a reduction of our free cash position down to $70,000, far below the 5% target that we adopted. We, that is, again, the Finance Committee and the Select Board. At a time like this, when revenues from outside the area, whether it's state reimbursements coming from federal funds, are, are being reduced, we have to be very, very careful about maintaining our reserve position. So that was one of the reasons why the Select Board voted to oppose this, this transfer of, of free cash for use for this purpose. The second one was that we believe strongly that every time a parcel of land is removed from the tax rolls, we are shifting the tax burden to every person sitting in this room who pays taxes. Now, with over 50 properties currently in, in Chapter 61, as every one of those properties comes out of 61, and if the town were to establish a project for the, the purchase of these properties, somehow or other, the lost tax revenue has to be made up. That puts a further burden on people in this town. So it was for those two reasons, and those two reasons alone, that the Finance Committee voted, again unanimously, to oppose this particular project. Now, what, in our concern for our debt position, we, I think Jay alluded to the fact that we have a very high standard and pores rating. Our standard and pores rating right now is, is AA+. It's the highest we will ever get. We get, we borrow at the rates that communities that have AAA ratings, like Lennox, and like Great Barrington, by the way, which we should not demean, as we have numerous collegial projects with Great Barrington. And our rating went to AA+ about 10 years ago when we established the OPEB Trust. Standard and Pores also commented at the time about our very substantial reserves and how important that was for the maintenance of the financial health of this community. So the, the Finance Committee is very concerned about the depletion of our reserves and very concerned about the maintenance of our very high investment grade that we currently enjoy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. It's a very unusual situation we have here tonight where the devil is with us. And I don't know if Mr. Lees would like to address the group. You've heard an awful lot of things that were probably not 100% accurate, and maybe we'd like to hear from you.
Good evening. Good evening. For your record, my name is Jim Scalise. I'm a resident of Dalton. I looked at the purchase of this piece of property really to develop some building lots in that I'm a, I looked at this property as a development, as that I'm a father of five, and I'm looking for lots for my children returning from college and him having a difficult time finding any. So I'm not a, I'm not a black hat developer trying to come to your town and trying to develop a piece of land and, and, and cause an impact or a negative impact in any way. What I'm trying to do is be collaborative, and I've sent emails to folks, and I've, I've been available as part of this situation. And however the town wants to move forward, it's all I'm trying to do is make it economically feasible. And that may mean more density than some folks want. It may not meet the open space goals of others, but at the end of the day, if I can build some lots there for my family, hopefully, I'll probably have to sell some to make it work. Roads are very expensive. Whoever said that was absolutely correct. Your process is, is, is a difficult hill to climb. It's what I do for a living. I happen to be a civil engineer, so I can defray some of those costs. But if the town wants to collaborate on a piece of land and make some of it open space and make it economically feasible, I'll chip in any way I can to be collaborative and helpful and supportive. I'm not here to fight with anybody. I was hoping to possibly move here, not, not argue with folks about it. So if there's questions, I'm happy to answer them, but that's, that was the goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Scalise? Kate?
Kate Fletcher, Hawthorne Street. Some of you know, I am somebody who spends quite a bit of time thinking about open space. And I'm speaking about this property from personal experience, not as part of my work on any committee or board. And I will just mention that about 9% of this property is pipeline, and that is brushhugged as a matter of routine to keep it open because the pipeline has an easement. I am also aware from personal experience that the wooded areas, yes, it's in Chapter 61. My understanding is that Chapter 61 is a timber program. So this is a program that's intended for cutting. And I do know that the properties, the wooded part of this parcel is choked with invasives, invasive bittersweet, invasive honeysuckle. And I'll probably, this is not gonna be a popular thing to say, I'll probably be excoriated by some of my friends, but I'm just gonna mention that it's conceivable to me that properties here could actually improve the parcel. I wouldn't rule it out. And I guess my question is, we have a conservation agent. He's extremely capable, and my question is, has he evaluated this parcel?
Anyone know the answer to that question? No, no knowledge of it, and we don't have an agent? We have an advisor. Has that person been consulted on this property? No. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Scalise or anybody else? Yes, yes.
I just have one question, and I think it's an important one. And Steve, it's for you, Steve Schatz. You testified moments ago that there was $600,000 in free cash, that if we spent the $600,000, it would leave 70. Steve, before we vote, we, the town, we the people, vote on Article 13, Number 18. What is the amount of money in free cash?
So what Carol is referring to is one of the articles of use of free cash is to move $800,000 into our stabilization fund. If we weren't to move that, it would allow us to retain, we would still have the $600,000.
I'm going to do math in public, Michael, so stick around. So that means the actual amount of money in free cash right now is not $670,000. It is 1,500...
Yes.
And 40.
Yeah, there's over one and a half million dollars before we vote on the articles that are available to the public.
And were you to turn that down, were you to say, "No, we don't want to move that money. We vote no," on Number 18 of Article 13, then you would have well over $900,000 left in free cash. Free cash is something that replenishes every year. You can count on that. And I had one more thing to say, and I just forgot it. Oh, oh, okay. That over there is your Select Board. Think of it as the executive branch. That's the President of the United States. You know, well, no, excuse me. At any moment in history. And who does that make us? We're the legislature. And regardless of what these folks advise, regardless of what those folks suggested to you, not a money, not a dollar gets moved, not a dollar gets spent unless you tell them it's okay. And decisions are made by those who show up, and I am so delighted, whether you agree with us or you don't agree with us, that you're all here. Bravo to you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. John Gottlieb again, Birch Lane. I apologize for speaking twice, but I did want to say real quickly that I would like to make what I hope is a constructive suggestion. It's been mentioned several times that we have 50 properties that are in Chapter 61, any of which could come out, most of which probably won't come out. They don't come out unless somebody decides they want to sell it, but some people might. And I don't think the town's gonna be in a position financially to make the kind of arrangement that's proposed tonight for all of them, or even for many of them. So it would be, it seems to me premature... So, it would be, it seems to me premature to spend a bunch of money, even whether it's 600, 200,000 and money from the CPC, premature to do that when we don't know whether we would have other properties coming off Chapter 61 that would really benefit more from being protected. We are not told that there's a lot of restrictions on the developability of this land. It has sewer, and it might be that we'll get down the road and say, "Oh, man, I wish we'd saved some of that money to buy this parcel or that parcel." And maybe it would be wise, before spending any money on any parcel coming out of 61, to do a little study of the development potential and fragile nature or hazardous nature, where would be best to spend the limited amount of money that we'll have available to purchase lands coming out of 61? It's just too early to start now, and we have no knowledge about what the others are and a piece of land that really doesn't need to be conserved for environmental reasons. All the land is wooded that's in Chapter 61, so we could make that argument about every piece that we can't cut a tree. So, I really think it's worth thinking about a study that would examine where would be the best place to deploy some scarce resources. And at this time, it would really be a shame for any town money or any CPC money to be spent on this when there were so many other important needs. Thank you.
Hi, Tom Fine, and again from Rattlesnake Mountain. One question. What are the financial repercussions of not transferring the recommended amount of money to the reserve fund? What are the, what are the repercussions if we vote not to transfer $800,000 to the reserve fund? What does that mean? How does that affect the town's finances?
Right now, we have approximately $1.2 million in our stabilization. When we move 800,000, we'll have $2 million, and then we will have 671,000 remaining in free cash that gets calculated each year. So, overall, if we didn't move the 800,000, we'd have 1.2 million in stabilization, and we'd have additional funds still available through the free cash, 1.4. An opinion of that is the policy that was set up and that we take anything above, move it into stabilization in order to protect the town's finances. But that's a decision the two boards made on a policy for our investment of our reserves.
Any further discussion? I see someone's ready for the clicker, I see. All right. Before we vote, you should, you should know that this requires a supermajority, requires at least a 2/3 majority to pass. By law. Denny?
I thought I heard Carol or somebody say that if this came out of free cash, it was a major, a simple majority, not a supermajority. Could you please have that checked by town?
I just, I just did. She said no. You're welcome. Any other discussion? If not, we'll proceed to click. All those in favor of taking the $600,000 and buying the land with it as proposed by Article 17, please click 1. All those opposed, please click 2. Overwhelmingly defeated. 135 against, 65 in favor. Thank you for your interest. Article 8.
Article 8. I move that the town accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, Section 54B to allow the town's trust fund to be invested in accordance with General Law C 203C, the so-called prudent investment rule.
Article 8 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Matt?
I'm just curious. Matt Chester, 5 Church Street. How is it currently invested if it's not invested according to this rule?
So, there's normal investments that we make through normal banks. We put them in CDs. Sorry. We put them, I got to make sure to speak straight into the mic. So, we just use typical investment. We invest in CDs, other things for short-term investments, in the different savings accounts and other things. This would allow us to take up to 15% of our reserves and invest them in what are considered slightly higher risk items, no more than 1.5 in any particular one. This allows us to put them into bank stocks and insurance stocks, and there's a listing in the master's legislator of which accounts we can invest in. But what it does allow you to do is take a little more risk to try to get more return on the money that we have in the banks.
Answer the question? Great. Any other discussion? Now, proceed to vote on Article 8. All those in favor, please click 1. Opposed, click 2. Numbers seem to have decreased. 142, yes. 13, no. Article 9.
I move that the town adopts the Specialized Energy Code for the purpose of regulating the design and construction of buildings for the effective use of energy and reduction of greenhouse gas emissions pursuant to the entirety of 225 CMR 22 and 23, including appendices RC and CC, including future additions, amendments, or modifications thereto, with an effective date of January 1, 2026.
Article 9 is moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? Okay. David?
So, first of all, I want to thank the committee that worked on this, Laura Dubester and her group, for doing it. And having said that, nonetheless, I would oppose this. And I mean, this is a solar panel, one, right? Did I hear that? I was talking. Is this a solar panel or not?
So, I see Laura's heading over. She can explain 2, but I will say that this requires new construction to have zero effect. So, you're going to have to put solar on the building to offset any green energy, I mean, any carbon energy that's used. So, if you have any natural gas or anything else, you have to have enough solar to offset it. So, everything's about getting it to a net zero on only new construction.
Right. But that new construction includes anything that would be affordable as well, right?
It would.
Yeah. And I would object to that. I think that, sorry. I would object to the, so I, and we've heard it mentioned earlier tonight about the need for affordable housing. This is simply going to raise further the cost of housing in Stockbridge. And if it's a million-dollar home, this proposal isn't going to affect it. It's going to be a small percentage. But if we're a $300,000 house, and for example, the solution was solar, solar without its tax rebates is about $30,000 on a $2,000 house, I'm sorry, $2,000 square foot house. With the rebates, it's less, but the rebates are going away. Tariffs are coming in on solar panels. And if it was a $300,000 house, a $30,000 cost is a 10% increase in that cost of that house. So, my concern isn't the high-end cost, and my concern isn't the intention of the proposal, but it really makes Stockbridge even more unaffordable than it is now for many kind of starter families. And we can only hope that Stockbridge becomes affordable for more starter families, and this is not going to get us there. So, I would suggest that we say no, ask the committee to go back and look at it again, maybe have a carve-out for affordable homes or some other proposal, and come back to us next year with another one that takes affordability into account. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Laura?
Hi, I'm Laura Dubester, and I'm Chair of the Green Communities Committee. I'd like to go, I could do what the Finance Committee does and say that we've spent a year looking at this and studying it and having many presentations about this. On our committee, we have someone who's worked with energy and especially in the gas industry, an oncologist who especially looks at health, an architect, and historian and conservationist, and myself, who worked in energy efficiency and renewable energy and waste management for 30 years. This proposal is really the last thing that we need to become a climate leader community, which would enable the town to apply for up to $150,000 in technical assistance funds and up to $1 million for things like solar energy on the rooftops of town buildings, which will reduce our, directly reduce our energy costs in the future. Last year, there were five new houses. This doesn't affect additions. It doesn't affect alterations. It's new home construction. Of those five houses, two of them were already electrically heated. So, this is the trend. It's really, how do we incentivize and promote new construction, which is much tighter and more efficient, to become fossil-free, fossil-fuel-free? And that's really it. So, it requires new homes to be either electrically heated or electric-ready, which is much less expensive to do at the time of new construction. New home, the wiring, again, is less expensive. A lot of, a lot of home developers or ever want to do electrically heated because it is the least expensive to install. Solar, if, and still, the homeowner can choose whatever fuel mix they want. It doesn't require them to put in electric heat. It only says if you don't, we want it to be electric-ready. And if you don't, we ask that you, if your house can, has this siding, you don't have to cut down any trees, you don't have to do anything else, but if it's feasible to put some solar energy, solar panels on your roof to compensate for the fact that it's going to be fossil fuels. I just doubled the size of my solar panels so I could have electric heat, the heat pumps for, be able to plug in an electric vehicle, and it was way, way, way less than 30,000. And I'll just remind people that solar is probably the best investment or a really good one. I mean, like, right now, it has less than a 10-year payback. There aren't very many places where you can get a 10% return on your money. So, this is not a, this is not a difficult requirement. And I think those are the basics of this. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But again, I would just say that this isn't just like something that we've come up with, that it's something that we've really studied for a while, for a year. Thank you.
Jim Ballfance, Interlake and Road. I'm always concerned when I read in writing, and if we're going to pass this, the sentence that says, quote, "Including future additions, amendments, or modifications thereto." What you're, then, if you vote yes on this, you're tying this town into anything that's approved in the future. And we don't know what's going to come down the pike. I personally, and I'm not speaking for the Finance Committee, I'm speaking as an individual. Personally, I'm going to vote against this for that reason. I applaud the effort, but I don't want to have my daughter, my son-in-law, or any other future people tied to something that could come down the road that's going to be ridiculously expensive. Thank you.
I would just say that if something like that happens, we can go to, come to, back to a town meeting, and the town can retract this.
Patrick?
Couple of things. One, some people have talked about affordable housing, both at this meeting and other meetings. All right? Let's, let's divorce the cost to build a house with what someone's going to sell the house for, all right? For anything that is not built by either a nonprofit housing company or maybe the Affordable Housing Trust, so we're not in the business of building land, building the houses. It costs $300,000 to build a house versus $310,000 to build, to build the house. And we have someone here who put in a modular house, I won't name, for about that, that house is worth two, three times on the market what it costs to build it. So, the real question here is, is several thousand dollars more worth it? Now, I personally think the house is worth more if, as we, as a, as a society adopt more green energy, it does lower the price to carry the house. Houses can last 50, 75 years. Every year, the oil bill or the gas bill is lesser, nonexistent, if you actually have renewable energy. It actually makes financial sense. I'll also point out the stretch code. The stretch code is not one thing that's been the same way since 1950. The stretch code gets tighter and tighter and tighter because we live in a state which has made net zero by 2050 a set of goals. So, typically, what happens is that the specialized stretch code is eventually in the next three, five years, something like that, becomes the stretch code, right? Kind of. I mean, the fact is that the stretch code's tightened. This just makes it a little bit greener in terms of what we're doing here. And I personally don't think it's anything to worry about, certainly not with affordable housing.
Jim?
Jim Ballfance. Unfortunately, I still disagree with you when you, if, I would vote for this if you would merely remove after the pair, the comma after CC in that article and eliminate, including future additions, amendments, or modifications thereto. And the reason I say that, you made the statement, "Well, if it comes up, we can come back to town and make the recommendation, changes." Why should we have to come back to the town and make those changes? Why don't they come to the town and say, "Here are the new amendments, and we're asking the town to approve them?" So, I would vote for this if you would remove that part of the sentence. But other than that, I'm asking you to vote no because you don't know what you're voting for. Thank you.
Laura, rebuttal?
I don't know if we can make a change in that. Michael, do you know that, can you address that?
So, under the building code, there's three energy codes. There's a basic code, there's a stretch code, there's a specialized code. No matter which one you're in, when the state makes changes, we have to abide by them. So, this language does need to remain in. It's just which category we're going to be in. But the stretch code, the regular code, and the specialized code will all change under time. Right now, we currently have the stretch code. This would take us to the highest level, which is the specialized code.
Laura?
No, I just wanted to say that when we passed the stretch code probably 10 years ago, now it is the regular code. I mean, this is really what it is to be a climate leader. It is to take that step before every town is, before it becomes required of everybody. There is no crystal ball to say, you know, as Jim is saying, what, what is going to, what is going to happen in the future. But there's a good guess based on the state policy and based on what's happening, that this is a chance that our town can really take a good step to lowering the greenhouse, the greenhouse gas emissions from our homes, and that that's very consistent with state policy. Houses last 50 to 100 years, so it's something that we can do today. Houses last 50 to 100 years, so it's something that we can do today. It's not going to affect additions, alterations. It's really the very few new houses that are built.
Thank you, Laura. Any further discussion? Seeing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor of Article 10, nine, Article nine, please click one. Opposed, click two. 108?
Sixty.
To, 108 to 60. Article 10.
I move that the town accepts the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 221, which authorizes an annual increase in the amount of the exemption granted under General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22, Clause 22A, Clause 22B, Clause 22C, Clause 22E, and Clause 22F, by the percentage increase in the U.S. Department of Labor Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index, CPI, for the previous year as determined by the Commissioner of Revenue to be effective for applicable exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, 2025.
Article 10 has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes.
What is it? Yeah. [laughter]
This is the exemption for veterans, and all of our other senior exemptions are adjusted by the CPI. This is the only one that's not, so this would now adjust the annual monies received by veterans.
Good question.
Any other good questions out there? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please click one. Opposed, two.
Excellent.
Article 11.
Article 11, you know what this is too. I move that the town accepts the provisions of General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22J, which authorize an annual increase in the amount of the exemption granted under General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22, Clause 22A, Clause 22B, Clause 22C, Clause 22E, and Clause 22F, by 100% of the personal exemptions amount, subject in the conditions in Clause 22J, to be effective for applicable exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, 2025.
This is another section that involves veterans, and it basically allows us to double the benefit that veterans would receive from their exemptions.
Any further discussion? Good answer, Michael. All those in favor of Article 11, please click one. Opposed, click two. Article 12.
All right, zoning changes. I move that we, that, I move that the amend, we amend, I believe I should say, I move that we amend the general zoning bylaws by, number one, striking from the amended use table 411A, Principal Use District, Section 4.4. Two, adding under the amended use table 411B, accessory uses, Section 1.1, to read as printed in Exhibit 2, which looks like this. And adding a new section, 6.32, accessory dwelling units, to read as printed in Exhibit 2.
Article 12 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Explain, please.
You want an explanation? Uh-huh. Michael? Oh, nope. Okay. Kate? Yeah, she's ready. Kate, you'll probably want to stay over on this side of the room in case there's another question for you.
Getting my steps in here. All right, so Kate Fletcher, and I'll just provide a little bit of context and some information and thoughts, based on my perspective as Chair of the Planning Board. These are just things you might want to consider when you vote. So a little context, last year, on August 6, the Massachusetts Legislature and Governor signed into law the Affordable Homes Act, which included wording that mandated accessory dwelling units as a buy right in residentially zoned districts. On January 31 of this year, regulations for accessory dwelling units were issued by the State Housing Agency overseeing implementation. On February 2, accessory dwelling units as a buy right became state law. The accessory dwelling unit mandate coming from the State Legislature and Governor is a result of advocacy, including locally at the town level, from affordable housing advocates. Updating the Stockbridge zoning bylaws is the responsibility of the Planning Board. The wording that you are voting on today incorporates the state mandate into the Stockbridge zoning bylaws. There were decisions that needed to be made by the Planning Board in three areas. These were areas that did allow local control. The first was the number of ADUs or accessory dwelling units per parcel. Options were for one or two. The Planning Board voted unanimously for one accessory dwelling unit allowed per parcel. The second question was the number of accessory dwelling units on a condoized parcel. The options were for one per parcel, that's the entire parcel, or one per unit, per condo unit. The Planning Board voted unanimously in favor of one per parcel. The third question had to do with the use of accessory dwelling units as short-term rentals. The Planning Board voted five to one in favor of accessory dwelling units not being used as short-term rentals. These are Planning Board recommendations that, in my opinion, reflect a moderate approach that acknowledges that we do not really know how this will play out, and with the idea of avoiding unintended consequences. Impacts to the built environment, residential character, or property values will depend on location relative to other parcels, parcel size, location of existing structures on a parcel, and perhaps unanticipated factors. So these are, this is a summary, and I hope this is helpful. I think this is very much an individual vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kate. Any questions? Yes. Patrick?
I just want to say that I attended a lot of the Planning Board meetings related to this, and I think the Chair did an excellent job at soliciting feedback and input. I think the Planning Board did an excellent job at balancing that feedback and input, and I plan on voting for this zoning change. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote on Article 12. All those in favor, please click one. Opposed, click two. 137, yes, 13, no. Article 13.
Article 13, I move that the town appropriate and transfer from available free cash the following expenses for the year as read by the moderator, excepting those held, items held, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation.
Do I hear a second? Article 13 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes, Jay.
Just one, one quick point. We've had some edits on this, and it looks like number six should really read Stockbridge Town Offices, Parks, and Recreation Fields. Offices, not town hall.
Judge?
Change it to Bidwell Park.
Number six, Bidwell Park. Make that change, folks.
Oh, it's not a change. It's just a reference to Bidwell.
Make the correction.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Denny?
I was going to get a text to put a hold on.
Well, I'm going to read them all, you're going to have to hear them. Turn it up. Yeah, turn it up. I'll turn it up, never mind. Okay, number one, transfer and appropriate $50,000 for the purpose of funding a breathing air compressor with four bottle cascade systems for the Stockbridge Fire Department. Now, if someone wants to discuss any of these, that's when you yell, "Hold," and I'll make a check mark, and we'll come back and discuss the held parts of this article. Transfer and appropriate $10,141 for the purpose of funding Stockbridge's share of the tri-town health move in fiscal year 2025. Three, transfer and appropriate $288,000 for the purpose of purchasing a Type 1 ambulance. Four, transfer and appropriate $30,000 for the purpose of reconstruction and repairs of the town offices roof. Transfer and appropriate $50,000 for the purpose of funding a feasibility study for a possible new fire station. Number six, transfer and appropriate $60,000 for the purchase of, purpose of funding a pickleball slash skating rink at the Stockbridge Town Bidwell Park and Recreation Fields. Seven, transfer and appropriate $33,500 for the purpose of funding a Revolutionary Ward Transfer and appropriate $25,000 for the purpose of funding for commemorating the 250th anniversary of the country on July 4, 2026. Transfer and appropriate $10,000 for the purpose of funding the replacement of a 40-yard straight wall dumpster at the transfer station. Number 10, transfer and appropriate $80,000 for the purpose of tuition and transportation to the Conic High School for its career exploratory program. 11, transfer and appropriate $15,000 for the purpose of funding electronic voting clickers for use at town meetings. 12, transfer and appropriate $15,000 for the purpose of funding engineering and architectural building envelope surveys for town offices. 13, transfer and appropriate $15,000 for the purpose of funding radar feedback speed signs for the Stockbridge Police Department. Number 14, transfer and appropriate $16,000 for the purpose of funding a new flagpole in the town, Stockbridge Town Offices. 15, transfer and appropriate $72,000 for the purpose?
Oh, sorry, flagpole.
14 is, transfer and appropriate $16,000 for the purpose of funding a new flagpole at the Stockbridge Town Offices. 15, oh, hold, okay. Transfer and appropriate $72,000 for the purchase of, purpose of funding a hybrid police cruiser for the Stockbridge Police Department. Was that a hold? 16, transfer and appropriate $200,000 for the purpose of funding the additional work repairing the cupola on the Stockbridge Chime Tower. 17, transfer and appropriate $50,000 for the purchase, purpose of establishing and funding a retirement payout stabilization fund for the payout of accrued sick leave and vacation time upon employee retirement. 18, transfer and appropriate $814,632 to the General Stabilization Fund. Okay, so we'll go back to the first hold. Number five, transfer and appropriate $50,000 for the purpose of funding a feasibility study for a possible new fire station.
This is a great project.
Denny Alsop.
Denny Alsop.
Restream.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is a great project. However, I note that the location is marked a fault site or something like that. And the location is on a sliver of land which is in the 500-year floodplain of the river. But it's surrounded by 100-year floodplain. And we get 100-year floods now, on the average, every 20 to 30 years. So that is an issue. The other issue is that this site is in the dam break inundation zone for, of dam failure at the Stockbridge Bowl, at Goose Pond in Lee and Tearingham, and the Woods Pond Dam on the Lee Lennox Line. And I believe that this, that dam failure and flooding are the highest rated hazards in the Stockbridge Hazard Mitigation Plan. And for us to locate, what I'm raising the question is whether it's wise to stick with a default site and whether we are considering a search for a site which is of higher elevation. Thank you.
So just so everybody's aware, in the EMS fire study that's been going on for over two years, we identified a default site, which is right beside our sewer treatment plant. plant, our water treatment plant, and the highway garage. That is the area we just said we already owned. It's already been developed. The rest. It is not the only one to consider, and part of this feasibility will be to look at what other options are available. But at the time, we had to give an idea of where it could go. That's a potential, but there are some other areas that will be considered, and we will use this feasibility to examine all of those concerns.
Jay Baikowski, just keep in mind on this, we're talking about a feasibility study for joint fire EMS organization with West Stockbridge. So, feasibility means what's the feasibility here, there, or elsewhere? There are a lot of options going to come out of this, so we should be clear about that.
Any further discussion? Second. So, we're not going to vote on these individually. We'll discuss them. If anyone feels that that was not answered completely or wants to have a vote on it, then we'll cut it out and vote on it. Article six, or section six. Article 13. Transfer and appropriate $60,000 for the purpose of funding a pickleball-skating rink at the Stockbridge Bidwell Parks and Recreation Fields. Any discussion on that? Yeah. Denny?
The, I'm not sure what the location is proposed for this wonderful project. However, a few years ago, the town built a drainage system which connects the backside of Town Hall to a, an outfall which is within the 100-year floodplain of the Houston River, located above the bridge to Ice Glen. And I believe that it is possible that we could have a repeat of what happened in 2018, when we had a warming and rain, and we had ice sheets coming down the river, which backed up against the Route 7 Bridge on South Street and raised the water level very quickly. And our EMD at that time, Chris Marsden, did an amazing job in preventing some serious damage. I think that this could also happen upstream at the bridge to Ice Glen, the footbridge, which is also a construction in the free flow of the river. So, I would like to have the town consider a way to prevent the reverse flow of water up that drain system from the river into, up through the drain behind the Town Hall, which would flood our record room, our police area, and move in and also flood the historical room of the library. So, I would like the town to take a look at that. Thank you.
Well, I'll just deal with the location of the pickleball court and skating, and right now, it's proposed that we do it between the park and the tennis court, so it'll be up on the higher level.
No vote, right? Denny? You don't need a vote. Number seven. Transfer and appropriate $33,500 for the purpose of funding a Revolutionary War memorial. We had a hold on that? Yes. Sally? I can't even hear you, Sally.
My question is, is it duplicated? It's on the CPC vote, and it's also on the town vote, so I'm just wondering which one gets it.
I wrote this article. The cost for the, for the project was double, and we felt that both CPC should approve it and the town should approve it to make sure it's something that everyone wanted to do. But I think it's a great project. It's going to, and if Rich is here, he could address it. Oh, yeah, over there, obviously. You know, it's a great project that's going to really fill a gap that it's the one, it's the one set of veterans who are not honored, you know, with a memorial in town, and I think we should go ahead with it. Thanks.
Off that. Next, the hold. Number 14. Transfer and appropriate $16,000 for the purpose of funding a new flagpole at the Stockbridge Town Offices. Someone wanted to hold on that? Yeah. Sure.
Nina Ryan, Main Street. I just wondered how a flagpole can cost that much.
Due to the fact that the height of this flagpole, in addition to the cement foundation, we actually have to bring a crane in to set it. So, most of the cost is actually in the rental of a crane, which is why you see a good, a much larger cost to doing this. The current flagpole where it's located, it's broken now, and the flag kept getting tied up in the tree, so we're actually going to move it to the east, so it's in that clearing, so it won't get tied up in the trees. But it's actually, the biggest cost was for the crane.
Answer satisfies? Number 16. Transfer and appropriate $200,000 for the purchase of funding the additional work repairing the cupola on the Stockbridge Chime Tower.
Lisa Sauer, 98 East Main Street. I'm just curious whether a conditions assessment has been done on that roof, how they came to the number of $200,000, and if it has been put out to bid, or whether they just automatically assumed that whoever's doing the work on the building right now would do the roof as well.
All right. So, this one isn't good news. So, the project went out to bid last spring, and it came in at $360,000 to do all the work up top. This is a historic restoration. Things that we're doing, such as removing the slate and then all the pieces of slate from the original that we can reuse, are going to go on the north side first, then the west side, then the east, then the south, and then replacements will go on the backside, working the other way, but you have to do the whole thing. As we began doing the project, and I've given updates to the select board, we realized that a couple areas, one was we had quite a big hole over one of the support columns. The water was pouring in. The entire column was rotted. Myself, I know Hugh Page saw it, where they drive the screwdriver this long right into it, it's completely rotted out. So, in order to do the restoration work, and it looks like we're going to restore the columns to their original shape, we're using, I believe it's birch, white birch wood, the same wood that's been up there. So, as a historic project, this ended up being a change as we realized the damages as we got further in were actually beyond what we thought as we removed some of the outer pieces and saw that the work underneath, that there was rot that couldn't have been seen originally when the bid went out. We've been working with our engineers. Right now, we are not anticipating to have to use the entire 200,000. We actually think it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 to 70 for the change order that we have. At the time, I had asked for 150,000. The select board wanted to go to 200,000 because their thought was, if we run into other changes, the last thing we want is when we go to the, our memorial for the 250th anniversary of the country, that we're still working on that building. And if we don't have the funds to do future changes, if we run into further problems, then it would hold up the project, and we'd have to wait to either call a special town meeting or something else. So, this is putting a little trust in the select board's hands and myself's hands that we'll get those engineering reports. We will make sure that we're doing the work that is necessary, but we want to keep this project on task with an October completion date, so we can have that tower restored to its grandeur for next year's 250th anniversary. Any funds not used would be reverted back to free cash for the following year.
Lisa, is that okay with you? Yes. There it is. Article 14 is here. Oh. You're right. We still have to approve the entire thing as held. All those in favor of Article 13? Please click one. Opposed, click two. 127, yes. Eight, no. Passed. Article 14.
Article 14. I move that the town appropriate and transfer from sewer available surplus the expenses for the year as read by the moderator, excepting those items held, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation.
Article 14 has been moved and passed? And seconded? I'm sorry. Must be getting late. Transfer and appropriate $125,000 for the purpose of funding various sewer main replacements. Transfer and appropriate $25,000 for the purpose of funding pump station pumps overhaul. Three. Transfer and appropriate $30,500 for the purpose of funding half the cost of a hybrid half-ton 4x4 pickup truck. Transfer and appropriate $17,563 for the purpose of reducing the amount to be raised through sewer rates for the fiscal year 2026. I heard no holds. We can vote on this and discuss it first in its entirety if anyone has a question or discussion on Article 14. Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of Article 14's four parts, please click one for yes, two for no. Article 14 has passed. 113 to two. Article 15.
Move that the town appropriate and transfer from Water Operations Reserve Fund the expenses for the year as read by the moderator, excepting those items held, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation.
Number one. Transfer and appropriate $5,000 for the purchase of funding the replacement of the water plant loading dock exterior staircase, stairway. Number two. Transfer and appropriate $5,000 for the purchase of funding the Marion Fathers' water storage tank cleaning. Hold on that. Number three. Transfer and appropriate $30,500 for the purpose of funding half the cost of a hybrid half-ton 4x4 pickup truck. Four. Transfer and appropriate $74,109 for the purposes of reducing the amount to be raised through water rates for the fiscal year 2026. Okay. So, we have one hold. Number two. The, no. You want to know about it? Okay. Our water department chairman will address your question.
Hello, Michael Buffoni, Stockbridge Water Superintendent. This is the town's water storage tank at Marion Fathers' property, and this is, every five years, it's DEP regulation. We have to inspect, and they clean the water tank. It's an internal and external inspection.
Mike, a point of information. Do we hold a lease on that tank, or is it a...
The town entered a, in 2010, a 100-year lease for $1.
Good terms. Are you satisfied with the answer? Any further discussion on Article 15? Patty?
Hattie Andrew from Cherry Street. So, these are two different, sorry. Hattie Andrew from 11 Cherry Street in Stockbridge. So, there, it's just two different trucks that we're voting for.
I can just answer, Mike. It's one truck, shared by the water and sewer department, so they're going to split the cost.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor of all four sections of Article 15, please click one. No, two. Passed. 110 to three. Article 16.
I move that the town appropriate or reserve for future appropriation monies from Community Preservation Fund annual revenues, specific reserves, or other available funds for the administrative expenses of the Community Preservation Committee, the payment of debt service, the undertaking of community preservation projects, and all other necessary and proper expenses for the year as read by the moderator, excepting those items held, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation, and further that the town authorize the select board to execute agreements on terms acceptable to the board to the extent necessary to effectuate the public benefits of such projects.
Article 16 has been moved and seconded. And once again, I will read these, and if someone wants a hold, speak up clearly. Number one. Appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance a sum of $100,000 for affordable housing purposes to be used by the town of Stockbridge for the funding of the Stockbridge Housing Trust. Number two. Appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance a sum of $76,744 for affordable housing purposes to be used by construct, reconstruction of siding and decks at Pine Woods. by construct, reconstruction of siding and decks at Pine Woods. Three, appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance a sum of thirty-two thousand three hundred for affordable housing purposes to be used by the Stockbridge Housing Authority for replacement of damaged siding boards. Four, appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance a sum of forty thousand dollars for historic preservation purposes to be used by the Norman Rockwell Museum for roof repairs to the Linwood House and Ice House. Five, appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance a sum of ninety thousand dollars for historic preservation purposes to be used by the Berkshire Waldorf High School for installation of a wheelchair ramp at Old Town Hall. Number five is held. Number six, appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance a sum of twenty thousand dollars for historic preservation purposes to be used by the Town of Stockbridge Cemetery Commission for the restoration of the historic Hurst House. Number seven, appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance a sum of eleven thousand dollars for historic preservation purposes to be used by the Stockbridge Library, Museum and Archives for conservation of the oil painting of Agrippa Hull and a seventeen thirty-nine plot map of town land allocations. Eight, appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance a sum of twenty-five thousand dollars for open space recreational purposes to be used by Chesterwood for restoration of the Studio Gardens. Number nine, appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance a sum of five thousand dollars for open space recreational purposes to be used by the Stockbridge Housing Authority for raised flower beds. Number ten, appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance a sum of thirty-five, thirty-three thousand five hundred for open space slash recreational purposes to be used by the Town of Stockbridge for creation of a Revolutionary War monument. Number eleven, hold on ten. Number eleven, appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance a sum of twenty-two thousand five hundred for open space recreational purposes to be used by the Town of Stockbridge for Ice, an Ice Glen experience. Number twelve, hold on eleven?
Can we do a hold on one?
Hold on one? Number twelve, appropriate from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve Balance a sum of five thousand six hundred dollars for open space recreational purposes to be used by the Friends of Gold Meadows for work at Gold Meadows to pair, to preserve open space by removal of invasive species, tree, and garden work in order to enhance visitor experience and safety by installing benches, removing invasive plantings, and planting natives, native species on the stream edges. Appropriate from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve Balance a sum of forty-five thousand dollars for open space recreation purposes to be used by the Parks and Recreation Committee to create a covered shed to host concerts in the park. Fourteen, appropriate from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Reserve Balance a sum of twenty thousand dollars for historic preservation purposes to be used by the Town of Stockbridge to restore the Elizabeth West Stone. Fifteen, appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance a sum of fifteen thousand dollars for the fiscal year twenty-six, twenty twenty-six CPC administrative budget. Sixteen, to reserve, to the Historic Resources Reserve, the Community Housing Reserve and the Open Space Reserve from Community Preservation anticipated fiscal year twenty twenty-six annual revenues, the minimum amounts required by general law, Massachusetts general law, E point four-four B, and, uh, comma there, S point six, expected request thirty-eight thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars per category. Okay, we're going to go back now and review the holds. Starting with number one, appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance a sum of eleven, or one hundred thousand dollars for affordable housing purposes to be used by the Stockbridge, Town of Stockbridge for the funding of the Stockbridge Housing Trust. Who had the question? Yes, Laura?
More specifics of how that's going to be used?
Sally's coming up to answer it.
So I want to also, again this year, take the opportunity to thank all of the citizens of Stockbridge for your support for the Community Preservation Committee. We have, I don't know what the total is now, but we've spent over six million dollars in Stockbridge to improve our various landscapes and historic houses and to support our affordable housing. The, um, the money that we set aside for the Affordable Housing Trust is a way for them to be able to respond quickly if there is a project that comes up, and there are several, that might be appropriate for creating affordable housing in Stockbridge, and there are, there are at least three that I know of that are, could be really wonderful projects. So this money goes so that they can, um, they can act quickly.
Okay, does that satisfy Laura? Satisfied? I guess so. Okay, number five, appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance a sum of ninety thousand dollars for historic preservation purposes to be used by the Berkshire Waldorf High School for installation of a wheelchair ramp at the Old Town Hall.
Hi, over here.
Oh.
I walked over early. Dawn Lane, uh, Main Street. I just had a question about the criteria for the applications, and maybe Sally, you can answer this, but isn't accessibility part of general building expense? I'm just asking if the, um, if a wheelchair accessibility feature is part of a general building expense at this point, and I don't, maybe I don't understand the criteria for applying to the community preservation, but we're not preserving, we're not preserving something that it hasn't, it hasn't existed. So I'm just curious how, I'm not anti, I worked in the disability field for thirty years, I'm just curious why this isn't just part of the building expense.
Thanks, Don.
The reason is that it's under historic preservation. So in order for that to happen, it has to meet certain criteria, it has to have a certain historic aspect to it, which I understand wasn't there before, but it's part of the project. We looked at this because there is upstairs going to be a community space that people can use for various activities, and it will be free of charge. You are obviously encouraged to make a donation, but it will be free of charge. And we had, when this building was renovated, the whole purpose was to put it, make it ADA accessible, and so there's an elevator in there, which is why it couldn't be used for Town Hall for a long time. But it doesn't do any good for it to be ADA accessible if you can't get into the building, so clearly it needed to have a wheelchair accessible ramp.
Sounded logical.
That's what we, Don.
Don, you okay with that one? Okay. All right, moving on. Number ten, appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance a sum of thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars for open space recreational purposes to be used by the Town of Stockbridge for the creation of a Revolutionary War monument.
Emerson Holly from Lucman Lane. I, between this allocation and the previous one, there's like sixty-seven thousand dollars for a Revolutionary War monument, which I think is a good thing, but what is it going to be? Is there going to be an artist competition? Who's going to decide what it is, uh, and where is it going to go? Is, uh, what are the inputs to that monument?
You can clarify if I get it wrong. Um, the, the, the plan is to have another stone installed at, um, on West Main Street where the monuments currently are. It will match and, um, will match the stones that are there.
So in terms? Uh, sorry, yeah, Rich Bradway, East Main Street. So I'm working with the veterans of Stockbridge as well as the veterans of the Stockbridge Munsee Community, um, and, uh, they had indicated and requested the existence of a Revolutionary War Memorial in town. Just this brief history note, um, back, way back when, um, Stockbridge used to be the seat of the county, and it was also a mustering point for the Revolutionary War, um, in which all members of the county would come to Stockbridge to enlist, to fight, in, engage in fighting, uh, the monarchy of, of Great Britain. That being said, uh, through the work of researchers, uh, we have researchers with the Stockbridge Munsee Community, um, as well as local researchers, we have, um, our former Police Chief Rick Wilcox, Gordon Roberts at the Berkshire Athenaeum, um, they're all researching all these names, and to date, we have, uh, two hundred and nine colonial names that were residents of Stockbridge and ninety-two Mohican names that were members of Stockbridge. One of the challenges that we're facing is that number might in fact go up, so the total number, if I'm doing my math correctly, is three hundred and one names, um, and we probably will have a much larger list to draw from because, um, the Mohican people didn't necessarily look at the confines of Stockbridge, even though we used deeds to kind of define that. They didn't necessarily identify Stockbridge as being their home, but all of Berkshire County and all of this region, so we're still working through the definition as to who will be on that. But that being said, that represents a very large stone, a very large memorial, and it's the intention that when we install this memorial, that we would actually reconfigure all of the memorials, uh, in town to reflect and, and make it more inclusive. That would also include some degree of work, uh, in the placement of the stones so that if, if you happen to notice when we have golf tournaments and stuff like that, a lot of cars parked everywhere, and in the past, we've had cars parked in the memorial space, uh, so we want to try to create a little bit more of a buffer there to protect those stones. And the other costs that are associated with this, which is fairly sizable, and I acknowledge that, is that if you look at some of the existing memorials in town, um, be it the World War II, Korean, Vietnam, there are a lot of names that have been glued on as an afterthought, and what we want to try to do is fix that, to make it look like it's intentional and that all the names are there. So there will be a committee that will be involved to sort of look at what this, the stone will look like and how it will be represented, and where it will be placed, and, and we welcome anybody in this town to participate in that process.
Thank you, Rich. Uh, does that satisfy the question?
I'm hard of hearing, and I would like to ask that Article sixteen be reread, uh, at the beginning so I can understand, uh, exactly what was said, uh, when, when the article was read. In other words, in other words, I thought that what was read was different from what Article sixteen says in the warrant, and I want to know if that's the case.
In the warrant, what, which warrant?
The, this?
We're on number ten.
Oh, am I on the wrong one?
Yeah. Not there yet.
Not there yet, sorry.
Yeah, well, but we're satisfied on ten. Who was it that came up and questioned it? All right, number eleven, appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance a sum of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars for open space recreational purposes to be used by the Town of Stockbridge for the Ice Glen Experience. Lisa, go ahead. Well?
Lisa Sauer. I would like clarification as to what the Ice Glen Experience is, and I would also hope that it would include additional parking, because there's already an enormous parking problem with the people that live on the end of Park Street and also on Ice Glen Road.
Okay, who, uh, who's in charge of the Ice Glen Experience?
Not, not really, but I can tell you what, I can tell you what the idea is. As, as most of you know, there's been a lot of, um, concentration on the old growth trees in Ice Glen and, and the Halloween Walk and all the things that have represented the history of this town that are associated with Ice Glen. But it, the, the concern was that for a lot of people, and, and we get a lot of people, I work at the Country Store and, on Main Street on Wednesday afternoons, and we get a lot of people coming by to say that they've walked the Mary Flynn Trail and that they've walked up through Ice Glen, so it's really a, it's really something that visitors come to see. But not all visitors can do Ice Glen, because if you've ever walked it, you know that it's difficult. And so the idea was that there could be created as a, a kind of a virtual tour of Ice Glen for folks that can't get there, and the reason for that is to help awareness and preservation of this very special area that we have in town, and I think Patrick probably has more information than I do.
I would just add that, um, a wonderful gentleman named Bob Leverett, who's eighty-five years old, and two years ago was featured on the cover of Smithsonian Magazine in a photograph that was taken in Ice Glen, is the, is basically the father of old growth forest. He, he discovered sort of that this was a thing, and is now a world famous guy who doesn't know of a better place in the whole world than Ice Glen, and he's actually, you know, for this online experience, has agreed at no cost to the town to narrate this little set of, this basically longer film and set of snippets that people can watch as they go through the forest, and I think it's so great to memorialize his expertise and, and his love for that forest, you know, now, while he still can walk through it. Thank you.
Any further?
And no, there was nothing about parking. Sorry.
Virtual.
That was the plan, that, that people could, you know, even people in Stockbridge who, who can't get up and walk up Ice Glen would be able to know something about a piece of their own town.
Can the Finance Committee approve this?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? That's the final hold. Yeah, Patty?
Patricia Andrew, eleven Cherry Street. Why twenty-two thousand five hundred? Just curious.
Is that how much it costs for virtual?
Patrick.
Actually, the, the request was a little more, and it came down, um, there was a, there's a, the cost to hire the videographers, the film, the film editor, you know, the, uh, the, uh, post-production editing, making videos are expensive, and, uh, and it also includes a website with those little QR codey things so that people can kind of go to the right section while they're walking through the Glen.
Thanks. Any further? Yes.
Where is the Elizabeth, Elizabeth West Stone?
It's in the cemetery.
It's, it's, it's right near the John Sargent Stone in that section.
That was the final hold?
And it, it had been damaged, and so they, they need to repair it.
That's not the one you want? No. Number 16? Okay. It's about reserves for the CPC Committee, okay? Reserve to the Historic Resources Reserve, the Community Housing Reserve, the Open Space Reserve, from Community Preservation anticipated fiscal year 26 annual revenues, the minimum amount required by Massachusetts General Law, C.44B, S.6, expected request of $38,897 per category, which roughly is going to be under $120,000.
Garrett?
Yes.
I was asking that Article 16, they can dump the...
Oh. Jamie read.
There's a difference between motion and the warrant article. One's a motion, and the other one's a warrant article.
Subsection of Article 16 is what I just read, was the 16th subsection.
After a turn of 56 minutes. So I'm not sure.
Are we okay?
Okay. I just don't know, I don't understand the language of...
So, Denny, you have the warrant articles in front of you, but then what's up there is the motion being made to support that article, and they are all slightly different for each one.
Okay. Any further discussion on Article 16? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of Article 16 as read and reviewed, please click 1. All opposed, click 2. Article 16 has passed, 116 to 4. 103 to 4.
103.
Next year, can we have a little thing right here? Article 17 has been dealt with earlier in the meeting. Article 18, petition article to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws as follows. This is a petition article submitted by Denny. I'll sub.
Mr. Moderator, I wish to withdraw the article.
Thank you. Any objection? Seeing none, we'll proceed on. Article 19, to transact any other business that may legally come before this meeting. I would just like to say this. Number one, thank all of you for staying this long and helping us finish this. We couldn't do this if you left. Number two, I always thank the members of the Finance Committee, the one other group that I have anything to do with in town, and they do a great job, and I especially want to thank Bill Voight and Ed Lane, who have served for several years now, and due to reasons beyond our control, are stepping aside. So I'd like to thank you guys. You've been a huge help, and very, very appreciated. With that, seeing no further business, I adjourn this meeting to tomorrow's election. Get out and vote. Getting adjourned.